The town of Los Gatos Planning Commission meeting of Wednesday, July 25, 2018 is now called to order. Mr. Paulson, will you call the roll?
Thank you. Commissioner Badami.
Here.
Commissioner Birch.
Here.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Here.
Commissioner Janoff.
Here.
Commissioner Hanson.
Here.
Vice Chair Hudes.
Here.
And Chair Kane.
Here. I would ask everyone stand and join Commissioner Hanson in our pledge allegiance to the flag.
Please join me.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The town of Los Gatos strongly encourages active participation in the public process, which is a cornerstone of democracy and essential to the planning commission conducting its business on behalf of the town council and the citizens of the town. There are several ways for members of the public to participate in the deliberations of the planning commission. Prior to a commission meeting, written comments concerning agenda items may be submitted to staff. They are always welcome and always helpful. At the meetings of the commission, there are two opportunities for members of the public to participate. One is during the verbal communications period, an individual may speak on any topic not on the agenda. And two, any member of the public may speak during the public hearing of an item that is on the agenda. If you wish to address the commission during verbal communication or during the consideration of an agenda item, please complete a speaker card located on the back of the benches where you are seated. Turn the card into a staff member and please print your name clearly. For anyone who intends to speak this evening, I would ask that you come up to the podium, adjust the microphone so that you are speaking directly into it. And if you leave the podium, take the microphone with you. Please state your name and address for the record. In fairness, for all who want to participate tonight, it is requested that you limit your comments to three minutes. I have one card. Joan. This is on the property. Item four. Is that right? Item four. Good. Thank you. In addition to their service on the planning commission, members of the commission serve on several town committees. And do we have any reports on those committees tonight? Commissioner Hudes.
Earlier today, we had a meeting of the historical preservation committee, and we considered four items. The first item was 16928 Kennedy Road, which was requesting approval to remove a pre-1941 property from the historic resources. That was approved with some minor suggestions. The second one was 81 Fairview Plaza Unit A, which was requesting approval of minor residential development to change some windows. And that was approved with changes to the requested window style. The next one was 214 Caldwell Avenue. And this was again a request to remove a pre-1941 property from the inventory, and that was approved as well. And the last one was 245 Almendra Avenue, which requested approval to the exterior materials, including siding and a chimney, and that was approved as well.
Thank you. Commissioner Janoff, did you have your hand up for a report? Any other committee reports? Thank you. We now come to the verbal communications portion of our meeting. Members of the public are invited to address the commission on any agenda, on any item not on tonight's agenda. Do we have any such cards? I don't have any with me. Okay. We'll move on to the consent calendar. Items on consent may be acted upon by a single motion. But before the planning commission acts on the consent calendar, any member of the public or any member of the commission may request that that item be removed. Now, tonight, we only have one item on consent, and that is approval of the minutes of the digital act, July 11, 2018, planning commission meeting. Do we have a request to pull the item? Or is there a motion to approve? Commissioner Badami.
I move to approve the consent item consisting of the approval of the minutes of July 11.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Birch.
I'll second.
Any discussion? I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye. Aye, passes unanimously. We move now into the public hearings portion of our meeting and consider item agenda, agenda item number two, which is 50 University Avenue Conditional Use Permit Application U-18-009, requesting approval for our restaurant, Joe and the Juice, on property zoned C2, LHPPD. This is APN 52902044. The property owner is Federal Realty. The applicant is Tanise Bayer. And the project planner is Azar Khan. Can I have a show of hands from the commissioners who have visited the subject property? Are there any disclosures from any of the commissioners? Mr. Khan, would you give us our staff report?
Sure. Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. The applicant is requesting approval of a restaurant, Joe and the Juice, to be located in a 2,000-square-foot tenant space at 50 University, which was previously occupied by a retail clothing store named Lucy. Town code requires restaurant use located in the C2 zone to be reviewed by the planning commission. Staff recommends approval of the proposed use, subject to the conditions of approval. And this concludes staff's presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Do we have questions for staff? Commissioner Hudes.
I had a question about CUPs and the purview of the planning commission. My understanding is that some review of CUPs has been suspended by council. I also am curious, there were some questions raised here about formula retail or this use being similar to formula retail. Is there any overlap between formula retail and restaurant use? And what is the status of the CUPs that have been suspended?
And I'll go ahead and answer this. Formula retail and restaurants are separate. This is a restaurant based on our definition. The council has recently suspended the requirement for CUPs for formula retail. If this was a formula retail business, it would not be before the planning commission. It would just go through a business license. The other suspension has been for the deciding body for existing restaurants that want to modify their conditional use permits. And that can be done at the Development Review Committee based on recent council action. So this is a restaurant. It is not formula retail.
Just to follow up, the concept of formula and that type of thing then doesn't apply to something that's a restaurant. They could have, it could be a McDonald's.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions for staff? Commissioner Hanson.
I just had a question. I was wanting to ask a question of our Economic Vitality Manager. Is this a time to ask that, or is this just staff as in Mr. Khan?
Just ask your question.
So my question was, I mean, certainly in the comments we received from some of the people in the business community that there's perception of some potential overlap. So I was just wondering if you could comment on that because, you know, we're needing to and required to evaluate this against, you know, whether or not it is detrimental to the zone in terms of approving, you know, a CUP. So I was just wondering if you can comment on that and also, you know, the likelihood that there are any pure retail might be found as a substitute for Lucy.
There it is. Good evening, Monica, we're an Economic Vitality Manager. Thank you for your question, and I'm trying to weed out what the question exactly was. I think you were asking about what could replace this if there wasn't, if there wasn't a restaurant there?
That was one question, and then the second, the other question was whether you perceive this from your perspective as having overlap with some of the other downtown restaurants that we have that offer, have similar offerings, maybe not exactly the same.
I think that that's an interesting question. So our process here is fair and equitable. Anyone can apply and anybody can be, you know, go through the process. There's, that's why it's in place. As far as overlap goes, of course, there's going to always be overlap. So I can't comment on whether it's good, it's bad, it's indifferent. You know, I think that professionally, where I am in my place is that I want to see every business in Los Gatos be healthy. I want to see everybody thrive, whether they're, you know, an original here or they are a large company. I know that that area tends to be more of the larger companies. Although restaurants tend to be what we see people visiting more often now. So to say that an independent restaurant there wouldn't do well, I don't know that that's true. And as far as who could be there and from a retail perspective, I think it just, you know, we've seen people do really, really well there, and we've seen people not. So I think it's dependent upon the product that's sold.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Badami.
Since we have you up there, Monica, I have another question for you related to that. So have we had other inquiries for this location for a restaurant that might not specialize in juice bars? Because we do have what I'm going to consider a proliferation of juice bars in the downtown area.
So the interesting thing about that property is that Federal Realty really does a wonderful job of recruiting people, of finding people on their own. So I typically don't get a lot of calls for people looking for any of their properties. They do a lot of work on the front end when they know a lease is going out or when they know they're going to replace somebody. They already have a couple people in queue. So it's rare that I would ever have a call for that particular location.
Thank you, Monica.
I have a question for staff. We have an ordinance, is it 2021, that discourages replacing retail with restaurants. Why is that not applicable to this case? I didn't see it stressed in the staff report.
It's absolutely applicable to this case. If this was something that you wanted to use, we do still have that in place. We did take it to the council a couple of years ago. No action was taken on it. So we still have ordinance 2021 that discourages the displacement of retail with restaurants.
So the word discourage is not prohibit?
Correct.
How would you differentiate the two?
It's not up to me.
Do I wave my finger at them?
So ordinance 2021 is referenced in the staff report. It is on page three of six.
Right, but it doesn't say prohibit replacement of, it says, we should seriously consider.
Yes.
But it doesn't say why.
Well, I think the interest is that we make sure that we don't have restaurants taking over every retail space downtown. And we end up, I think some of the history of that is, some people reference another neighboring jurisdiction that has a lot of restaurants. And so they're looking to discourage that. But again, they don't prohibit a restaurant from replacing a retail space.
So if community development began to feel that we were headed in that direction, we'd find more teeth in 2021? Is that why it's there?
The teeth wouldn't change in 2021. At that point, if it got to a level where the council thought that it was an issue, then they would probably bring that to Monica and/or I's attention and then have a discussion on whether or not they want to make any modifications, whether it's juice or some other use in town.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Hudes.
As a follow-up, so my understanding is that there was a coffee shop there in that location, correct? Which was classified as a restaurant?
Yeah, I believe Borders had Seattle's best coffee that was part of their operation when they were in business.
And did that have a CUP for that use?
It did.
And my understanding is a CUP runs with the land. So did that CUP get revoked? Or how are we at the point where we need a CUP now?
CUP expires if it's not used for a year. And obviously, that business has been long since, over a year, that it has been gone. And so they no longer have a valid CUP for Borders and the accompanying cafe.
So there's no consideration that a previous CUP for a property gives any weight to requesting a new CUP if the previous one has expired?
It does not.
Okay, thank you.
And I would also guess if Lucy went in there for the coffee shop, the inference is that it would not be difficult for retail to replace a given restaurant, in this case, Joe Juice.
Yeah, I think it depends on the specific restaurant. Some restaurants, and I don't believe that's the case with this one, require a lot of expensive upgrades relating to commercial kitchen. But I don't believe that that is part of this, and I would look to Mr. Khan to confirm that.
Right, there are some kitchen uses, but I don't see it being an issue in terms of another retail use trying to occupy this in the future.
And your staff report clearly pointed that out. Any other questions? Thank you. I'm going to open the public portion of the public hearing and give the applicant up to 10 minutes to address the commission. And who will be speaking for the applicant? Tanise Bayer and Tobias Larson. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yeah. Shortly to introduce myself, my name is Tobias. I'm working as a retail associate. My name is Tobias. I work as a retail associate for Joe and the Juice. And you can.
I'm Tanise Bayer with MSA Architecture and Design. And we are here, or Tobias is here, to present a little bit about Joe and the Juice so everyone can get a more of an idea of what they present.
Exactly. So I have a couple of slides here today. I hope everybody can see it. Just to give you a small picture of what Joe and the Juice is and what we want to create with this, with this space. If you just go further. Joe and the Juice is founded by our CEO today, back in Denmark, 2002. And since then, we have developed into 15 countries all over the world. We just entered the United States of America. We are already in San Francisco and New York. We have eight stores in San Francisco, one in Burlingame. And the one that we are proposing to do here in Los Gatos is a flagship store as the one in Burlingame. And the difference from this flagship store compared to the concepts in general is that it's a little more calm compared to our concepts in Soho in New York, for instance, where it could be a little more busy, a little more upbeat. So here we're going to, if you just, yeah, this is, this is our menu. We are serving juices, sandwiches, breakfast, coffee, jokers, shakes, juice of all kinds, so both healthy and the sweets. And the difference between the store that we're going to use, to do here, and the concept in general is that we're going to do a little more breakfast products, a little more sit-down. We're going to do stay-in-service and, if you just, exactly. We call it our residential concept. So the mood is a little more cozy, a little more relaxed, exclusive. The music is a little more moderate compared to what you might have heard other places. We're going to play a little more relaxed music such as blues and jazz. We have a light setting. We have a little more exclusive range of furniture. We use a lot of Scandinavian design in our stores to make it look appealing and to make it look, you know, to make this, would you say, comfortable atmosphere, I would say. And yeah, of course, the residential menu will include omelets and something called rye bread that I don't know if you're familiar with here. It's a Danish thing. And yeah. We have taken some inspiration that you can see. So these would probably be the colors that we're going to use. It's, yeah, as it states, the keywords for this color are exclusive, refreshing, positive. It's a little more chic. And our inspiration is taken from places like Soho House, if you know that, Chaconis in New York. We really like these kind of designs, and we want to, to make this as well. Yeah? You can just go ahead. Yeah. A little more about our breakfast. All our products are made-to-order. They're freshly made with vegetables and fruits. We serve sandwiches as well. To answer the questions before, we don't need a kitchen. We're doing it behind the bar, and we do it in front of the customer. So nothing is pre-made. Everything is made on the order. We serve coffee as well, tea as well. And we're going to try out some more counter products because we want people to use the space as a place to hang out with friends and to stay longer. And yeah, it's open for everybody. And yeah, in comparison to our existing concept, we're going to do stay-in-service, which we normally does not do. So this flagship store will have service as in a normal restaurant. Yeah? Thank you.
Do we have questions for the speaker? Commissioner Badami.
Do any of your locations serve alcohol? And will you be seeking a license to serve alcohol at this location?
We do not serve alcohol in any places, and we will not apply.
Thank you.
Other questions? Commissioner Hanson.
I was just curious about the company's expansion strategy. Because as you noted, I looked on your website, and you have, having come recently into the United States, you have already eight locations in San Francisco. So what can we expect to see in the rest of California in the next two or three years?
Of course, we are expanding quite heavily, and we are not going to hide that at all. We analyze each city. So within San Francisco, we say we have a wide space. And we think that with these stores we have in pipeline now and the stores that we hope to do, we will reach, fulfill the wide space. So we have a number of stores that we think is enough in order for us to run, so we don't end up with cannibalism. And to give you a fair number, I don't know, I'd maybe say 12, 13, 15 stores maybe in San Francisco.
Are you actively at this moment seeking any other sites in the Silicon Valley? I thought I saw some mention of Palo Alto, and then you're pursuing this location in Los Gatos. Are you actively looking at other cities in the Silicon Valley, you know, within 50 miles of here?
We just opened a new store at 508 University Avenue in Palo Alto. We're going to open up at 240 Hamilton and at Stanford Shopping Center as well in Palo Alto. But again, it's with a little, it's with another concept, you could say. What I tried to talk about here is that the residential concept would be a little more relaxed, a little more, how can you say, casual.
Okay. The location in, on Hamilton is in Campbell, California, which is right next to us, right?
Yeah, I think so. It's Palo Alto. Yeah.
Oh, it's, there's a Hamilton in Palo Alto as well. Okay, okay.
Commissioner Badami.
In your presentation, I noticed that you had some very nice dishes and tableware for table service. My question to you is, how much of your business do you expect to be to-go? Where it's kind of, they go up to the counter, get their juice, coffee, kind of a grab-and-go type of element?
I think it would be hard to give you like an exact estimate on how, how many that would do so. I think probably half of all our customers would be maybe grab-and-go. I'm not sure how it works here, if people are grab-and-go culture. But they would be more than welcome to do so. You can go in and grab a coffee and walk in. We'd love you to stay and to enjoy your coffee, and that's why we do this initiative.
Based on your other business models, do you have that element where it's a lot of grab-and-go? Where it's more of a convenience type of stop for people? Or it's more of a lingering experience where they sit at the tables and converse with each other and spend a little time?
It's definitely more about the space, and that's also why we invest a lot of money on the furniture and trying to make this atmosphere appealing and a place that you want to go with your whole family or alone. We tend to say that we're all about inclusion, so we really want to invite everybody in. And as I said, you're welcome to just grab a coffee. But we would love if you would sit down in our furniture and enjoy.
Thank you.
Your time.
Commissioner Hudes.
Thank you for your presentation. Are you aware of how many other retail businesses within half a mile are primarily juice and coffee establishments? And how do you intend to differentiate yourself from other juice and coffee establishments?
To be honest, I don't know how many. I don't need the exact number. We tend to differentiate ourselves with our appealing spaces and our healthy products. We don't have any one-button coffee machines or anything. Everything that we do is freshly made in front of you, both from coffee to the sandwiches that we grill in front of you, the bread we grill it. And again, all the juices, we make them in front of you. And I think that that is going to differentiate us. The atmosphere, what we call the ambience, and the made-to-order healthy products that we serve in our stores.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. Thank you, Mr. Larson. I now invite comments from members of the public. If you've not already done so, turn in a speaker card, please. And when you are called to speak, remember to state your name and address for the record and adjust the microphone. You will have three minutes to speak. When the yellow light comes on, it means you have thirty seconds left. When the red light comes on, means you're done. I have a card from Caitlin Slyfer. Did I say that right? Good.
Hi, good evening. I'm Caitlin Slyfer, located at 155 North Santa Cruz Avenue in Los Gatos. I am one of the owners of Juice Co. Los Gatos here in town. I'm here on behalf of my company and other local businesses in our area and other residents and my customers. I have some other local businesses here representing themselves here this evening as well. I submitted a letter, which I'm sure you've reviewed at this point, and I'm here tonight to communicate collective opinions against the approval of Joe and the Juice in our downtown landscape, a company that is referred to as the future Starbucks. A consideration of a large global company like Joe and the Juice with two-hundred-and-sixty-plus locations worldwide, to move into our downtown starts to drive our small-town focus into more of a corporate urban landscape. It's not a small, local shot. This type of shift also requires a level of infrastructure, support, and scalability that our downtown cannot support. Approval of this type of company, from our perspective, would demonstrate a lack of strategic planning in the placement of these types of businesses in our community. We're not against competition or growth. I have three direct competitors in a one-mile radius of my store, but we do believe in holding on to the values that have made our town what it is today. I'd like to ask anyone here tonight in support of this stance to please stand with me. And I'm here to answer questions or any concerns, and we are all here to answer questions as well, if you have them.
Thank you, Ms. Slyfer. Questions for the speaker? Commissioner Badami.
I work right down the street from you. So I'm very familiar with the downtown. So I noticed that your business went in and then less than a few months later, right across the street, Press Juicery went in. And you mentioned that you've got three direct competitors within a half a block.
Yes.
Did you notice, that you were first, did you notice a decline in your business with some of the competition? For example, the one that's right across the street from you?
Yes, thank you. So we've been a business for about three years now, servicing local farmers' markets and integrating in our community, one of which is Purple Onion Cafe, which is here tonight. I would be naive to say that my business has not suffered for Press Juicery being across the street. However, I have a very strong local presence in the community and all the local businesses in town supported me and communicated to my constituents to continue that support. And I do have some key differentiators against Press Juicery that I've been able to sustain from that standpoint. Thank you.
There are other questions. Commissioner Hootis.
Just to follow up a point that I raised in my question, and you've addressed it a little bit different way. You said within one mile, you have three competitors?
I was being generous, probably.
Okay. So that's what you think it is? Because I think it's about a half a mile.
It's about a half a mile. I was trying to be generous.
Right. And those are establishments that primarily serve juice and coffee?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
I want to make sure I fully understand your objection. If the applicant tonight were not an international company and in fact had two or three locations, would your objection be the same?
I would have some concerns, but I don't think I'd be standing here in front of you this evening with the concerns. I'm a resident in Los Gatos. I lived here for eight years now. And my husband and I started this company three years ago because of the support that we gained in the community and because of the fostering aspects that this town provides. We're a town, we're not even a city. And this town really supported that community aspect. And I, I mean, the general manager at Urban Remedy, who is one of my direct competitors, we know and have conversations and we share constituents and we're a community together and we believe in having that same-end goal.
Just want to be sure I understand. The difference then is the number of locations that this applicant has?
The large global scale, that that starts to drive into our community and the infrastructure that that will drive, that we don't have to support, the traffic, the parking, that will start to come into our community as a result of that, yes, I believe will have a large impact and I believe will be a problem for our community.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hootis.
Just with regard to the competition, two things. How do you differentiate from competition? And what are some of the things that you do with regard to being involved in the community or giving back to the community in some way?
Sure. So I'll answer your first question first. To differentiate us, we are a hyper-local company, meaning everything is produced in town here. The owners live in town here. I employ, everyone that is, my employees lives in Los Gatos, many of them high school students, to support that aspect. So that's the local factor. We are a hundred percent organic. One of our competitors directly across the street does not, so that is a competitive feature for us. And I use ninety percent local produce from local farms and I know a lot of those farmers myself. And then we are raw and unpasteurized. So my juice has a four-day shelf life to maintain maximum nutrients. So those are the three competitive factors that we market ourselves as. In terms of integrating, did that answer?
Yes, absolutely.
To answer the question of integrating in the community, I have ten wholesale partners that are local, based in the South Bay specifically. Ninety percent of that is Los Gatos. So I work directly with other local businesses and helping cross-market those businesses. That's one of the ways. I also am at the farmer's market here in Los Gatos and have been there since 2015. We are, we have been at the Saratoga Market previously and Palo Alto, Willow Glen and Los Altos, so we integrate in the community in that way. I am part of the Los Gatos High School Youth Commission because of how many students I do employ and bring in a mentoring nature into our group. And integration far beyond that into charitable causes for a lot of the schools with St. Mary's, with the Club Los Gatos, we're working with them, and the kids fostering program that they're working on right now. So we almost never say no to any of those donations that we make in the community.
Thank you.
Other questions? I'd like to thank you for your letter.
Thank you.
Well-written and thank you for bringing down your supporters and thank you for your admirable contribution to the town.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. The applicant now has five minutes to add any further comments he or she may wish to about the application.
First of all, I truly understand and...
Into the mic.
I truly understand as a friend. To be clear, we're not coming here in order to take over anything or to destroy the neighborhood in order at all. We're here to, because we really love the area and because we think that our appearance would help the community as well. All our employees are also locally found, so it's not because that we are flying in everybody. The same goes with all our products and the ingredients within our products or juices. It's all locally sourced here from California. I know that our vision from day one has been like the new Starbucks. In comparison, Starbucks has around twenty-two thousand stores and we have around eight or nine in San Francisco. So I think the comparison is slightly overkill into what, into who we are as a company. We are international and most of our stores, around two-hundred-and-ten of them are in Europe, so they're not even in the United States of America. But there are some pros within being global. We tend to say that we are juice, coffee, and sandwich and much more. And one of these things is our internal educational platform that all our employees can attend. So for instance, we are developing an exchange program for all our employees where if you want to spend a half a year in Europe, for instance, you would be able to switch with a guy from Europe. So the global presence will also, we think, give some possibilities to the local employees that we hopefully will get in contact with, yeah.
You could get me six months in Paris? What do you pay?
Not in Paris, but in Nice.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yeah.
One other question. And that we often ask businesses, how do you intend to support the local community? And by that, I mean more than, and I think it's wonderful that people hire locally and use local products. But some businesses also, and those of us sitting here could probably tick off a number of those businesses, who also support local charities. We just heard, high schools, local schools, various things that we in Los Gatos value. Some large corporations are good at what they do, but to have them support something locally, they have to go back to New York or they've got to go to someplace to get an approval for something that many people can make right here. So what do you do in the local community to support that community along the lines of what I've just said?
We are taking it very seriously when we go into a city or a town. We are engaging locally and we, I know that we, for instance, we sponsored the Christmas lights in Palo Alto before we even came, I think it was. So we are aware that we are, we have a local presence and we just want to do whatever we can in order to grow the community, make it healthy. I think we have only good intentions with our presence here and we're not, we're not here to, as I said, to...
Where would the decision be made? Would the decision be made locally, for example, in the store, where there's such a store? Or is it made someplace else, a regional headquarters or something else? What is your experience insofar as where such decisions affecting a local place, where are those decisions made?
The decisions would typically be made on the headquarters, but within our organization, we have a quite lean organizational structure. So in each of our stores, we have a bar manager. So let's say that you are collecting, you know, donations to a specific thing, a specific thing within the community, then the bar manager would know and he would tell his regional manager, which is, which all typically runs five or ten stores, so he might even run the whole San Francisco. And then he will tell the office, the headquarters. So there's all, typically, there's only one or two guys in between the decision-maker and...
So if I understand that pattern, you've got the local person who goes to the regional person, who goes to the person in your hometown?
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hootis.
I had a question about the integrity and character of the zone. Are you familiar with the character of Old Town and what the core of Old Town was?
To be honest, it's the first time I've been here by myself today. I was not the one who, how to say, I'm fairly new to retail. So I wasn't here when we applied for Los Gatos, but I know that both the founders and my colleagues who applied and wrote a letter to the community here as well are very enthusiastic about this neighborhood and love it.
Ms. Byer, can you help with that question?
Unfortunately, I cannot. I cannot. I know there is some historical value, but I cannot...
So maybe you could follow up, but one of my questions is, Old Town's character as the original grammar school that was converted into shops is, to me, is part of the character of that location. And I think it's important that any business that comes in there recognize and not impair the integrity and character of that location.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay.
Do we have other questions? Commissioner Hanson.
I was, I'm actually honestly a little surprised that we didn't see some of our other restaurateurs that do coffee and that sort of thing, because we have many of those as well that are local. My question for you was, and I'm still trying to understand, is this going to be taking away business from other people or is it creating new business that wasn't there? One thing I was kind of curious about, and I'm sure the answer is probably obvious, but you have juice, coffee, and food. So generally speaking, in this type of location, the more laid-back, as you said, where's the general breakdown in terms of how much is juice, how much is coffee, and how much is food? As a percent of the total?
So to answer to that question, I think the best comparison could be our Burlingame store. I don't know if anybody of you had been there, but we are serving, almost twenty percent of our sales is breakfast, so it's our omelets and our joggers, our sandwiches that people enjoy before the lunch rush. We do serve a lot of juice, a lot of coffee, of course. But yeah, the breakfast initiative that we're doing here is, has definitely proven in our Burlingame store to be a good initiative in terms of increased breakfast sales, yeah.
So you're saying that this type of location, the food percentage is much higher than in other locations where it's more grab-and-go oriented? And then between juice and coffee, it's probably, because of the nature of your business, it's probably more juice and less coffee? Is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So I think when we create these spaces that people find attractive to go with their families and so on, they often buy the sandwich, all the joggers, all the omelets, you know, the food products that we serve. And that typically also goes with the juice or a coffee, of course. But we tend to see more food sales with the residential concept, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. Additional questions? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public portion of the public hearing and ask if any commissioners have questions for staff, wish to comment on the application, or are ready to make a motion. I have a question for staff. In our commercial guidelines or anywhere else, do we have any standards or codes regarding competition?
We do not.
So that aspect wouldn't be before us, since it's not in anything we're supposed to adjudicate?
We typically don't regulate competition down to that level. Obviously, you would want to look at the required findings and if there's anything in there that you believe does tie to that, then that's something that you could use. But strictly competition is not a basis for denial.
Other questions for staff or comment? Commissioner Hanson.
It's a follow-up to your question, so, and also Commissioner Hootis' question. So then, integrity of the zone means what?
This is a commercial zone, so it's commercial use. And so it's not the integrity based on the type of businesses that are in that zone already. And so that's what the meaning is, and I'm not sure if Town Attorney has anything additional, but it's a commercial use and a commercial zone.
That you're looking for, you know, impairing, having an adverse effect on the actual properties, not on the uses that surround it? That's what you're looking for.
Okay. I had one more question for our economic vitality manager, if that's okay. I was thinking about, you know, things being very kind of local and Old Town, I don't believe has a juice or coffee place in that center right now, so, or do they? That's my question for you.
Old Town itself does not have a juice or coffee shop, but right next to it...
Old Town itself does not have a juice or coffee shop, but right next to it is Urban Remedy, which is just right across this small residential street on University, so you can actually throw a stone there, but it's not considered part of the federal property.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have other comments, or is someone prepared to make a motion? Commissioner Hudes?
A question for staff. If someone were to propose putting a McDonald's in the middle of North Santa Cruz Avenue, would that potentially affect the character of North Santa Cruz Avenue?
That would be evaluated based on whatever they're proposing. So putting a restaurant, whether it's McDonald's or some independent, isn't necessarily going to affect the character of the zone. Now, could some come to that conclusion? Yes, because typically there aren't a lot of fast food restaurants in that area of downtown. You go north and you have, you could use McDonald's, you can use Subway, you know, there's one farther up North Santa Cruz, and would that be appropriate in the downtown? That determination would have to be made based on the facts before the planning commission.
Okay. Don't want to debate, but I'm reading the words, the character of a zone, and I personally think that that is something that we should consider.
I understand that opinion.
I guess I'm looking for a motion so we could use that as a debating point and move along. Commissioner O'Donnell?
The discussion we're having right before I make the motion, I would assume will go on after I make the motion, but, because we have some interesting questions, but the motion I will make, that we approve the CUP application, subject to the recommended conditions of approval are set forth in Exhibit 3, and that we find that the project is categorically exempt pursuant to Section 15301 of the California Fairness Quality Act, that's set forth more particularly in Exhibit 2. We make the findings as required by Section 2920190 of the Town Code for granting approval of a conditional use permit that is set forth in Exhibit 2, that we approve the application, which is U-18009, with the conditions contained in Exhibit 3. So that would be the motion.
Do I have a second? Commissioner Janoff?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Discussion. Commissioner O'Donnell?
These are, I think, difficult decisions, because we all have our concepts of the town. I guess one of the things I'm concerned with is the answers we've heard from staff, I happen to, not that it's important, but I happen to agree with it, and that is, if we say it is not in the character of the zone, for example, because you have 50 stores, and 30 of them are in Europe, I don't find that to be distinguishing factor. That would not change the zone. Now, if you say, as the hypothetical here was, well, what if it's McDonald's? Everybody has in their head what McDonald's looks like, and I think the answer that the staff gave was, well, tell us what is going to go in there, and then you can make the decision whether that's in character. But it isn't because the name is McDonald's, or because McDonald owns it, it is, if it is McDonald's as we're used to seeing, we'd probably say that isn't in the character of the downtown. Here, we have a store, I don't care how many locations they have, the question is, what do they look like? What do they intend to do? And is that, does that fit within our definitions? Is there something they are doing which would otherwise not satisfy our requirements? And the only one I think I've heard is this concept of character. And I've looked at the plans and specifications and the proposal, and I don't see how it doesn't fit with the plans, pardon me, with that location. If you look at Old Town and you see the various stores there, I have some difficulty distinguishing what this store does from everything else there and from the town. If I were a local merchant, I'd be concerned with competition, but, and I understand that concern, but I don't think we want to be judging competition. But if there's something about the use which does not fit the character, and I understand there's, some of you probably believe that, then I think we could turn it down.
Commissioner Badami, you had your hand up?
We need to make findings one way or another, and I'm going to have to agree with Commissioner O'Donnell. I am very concerned about the intensification of the juice bars and grab-and-go food downtown. I see the traffic problem. I think it's gotten worse because of these types of uses, because you have more people trying to parallel park in and out, so it holds up traffic all the more, but competition does regulate itself. I can't make the finding to the contrary. I'm sorry, I'm, I, this is our job, and sometimes we have to make tough decisions, but I'm going to have to agree that I can't make the finding otherwise. And I'd like to make one other comment to what Commissioner O'Donnell said. What I see at Old Town is Anthropologie, Lucy was there, Chico's, they're all formula retail stores, so the fact that this particular juice bar restaurant has a global presence, I've actually never heard of them, so to me, it's something new.
Commissioner Hanson?
I was going to say, I was having the same problem, and especially if the integrity of the zone is strictly the commercial use, that we don't really have any grounds that I can see to deny the request for the CUP. The only grounds that we potentially have that I would see would be the ordinance 2021, which is whether or not any restaurant could be there versus a retail. And we know this from many other hearings, that it's been increasingly difficult for retailers, traditional retailers, to find, you know, success in Los Gatos. So we have to look at every one of these restaurants, and we don't have the concept of a formula restaurant, per se, it's just the formula retail, so, and I also agree with Commissioner Badami, that this company is primarily, you know, outside of the United States, and I hadn't heard of them, although I am a bit concerned that there, we're going to see a lot of Joe and the Juice in the area, given what already happened in San Francisco. But we, that's still not a reason to deny it in terms of the findings that we have to make, so I will be supporting the motion.
Commissioner Janoff, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I do. Just taking a slightly different view of the application. Old Town is an interesting area. It's kind of by itself, it's got formula retail in there. We've been talking a lot about how we want to encourage the public to come downtown and stay downtown, and one of the things I've found interesting about this proposal is it's encouraging people to stay and linger. So that means, maybe I'm going to start shopping at Anthropologie, get thirsty, I stop in it and have a juice, and then I go over to Talbot's, and then I get hungry, because it's now lunchtime, and I can, you know, so I can stay in the area, I can enjoy my meal, maybe even start before the shops open with breakfast. It, to me, served a little bit different slice of what the public might need in terms of an early morning kind of a venue. The other restaurants that, barring the juice, Urban Remedy, but the restaurants in Old Town, per se, don't really service that morning kind of a crowd, and they really are where you want to go, they're not necessarily go shop and then have lunch and then keep shopping. So I found the casualness of the concept to be an appealing one, also that it backs up to a residential area, offers the residences an opportunity to partake, and a leisurely casual opportunity, and I found that appealing, in addition to the other reasons my co-commissioners have talked about.
Commissioner Hudes?
This is a tough one for me as well, despite sort of the line of some of the questions that I asked, and I'm close to the line on this one. The couple of things that I wanted to remark on is that I don't believe that this business owner understands what it means to be desirable to the convenience and welfare of the community other than to operate a successful business. And I think that that, when we ask questions about community involvement and things like that, I think it's very important, and I think it's very difficult to get that from a firm that isn't community-oriented. The other thing that gets me close to the line is the integrity and character of the zone, and I think that increasingly, as I walk down North Santa Cruz and I see what's there, I see that character changing, and when I turn to Old Town and think about the efforts and struggles that the town went through to preserve that property, I would like to see a business contribute to the character, not just exist there. And clearly, this business isn't even aware of what that character is, so I would, I question whether they would be able to protect or not impair the integrity and character of that area. What pushes me one way or the other on this is 2021, and I think that although it's not a rule, it is, to me, some indication of the direction that the town would like to go in terms of not allowing retail to be converted to restaurant, and so that pushes me over the line and into the area where I have to oppose this, because I think there is clear guidance that we shouldn't move to that kind of conversion when there are other issues as well. So I'm afraid I'm opposed to this.
Other comments? I have one. The role of the planning commission is to adjudicate, that is to say, we are a quasi-judicial function. As such, we are given codes, standards, guidelines to apply to a particular case. It doesn't matter how I feel, and it doesn't matter how I feel about competition. If competition is not in the codes and the guidelines in front of me, perhaps it should be. And in that sense, we could make suggestions to Town Council to define character and integrity of the zone, and to define deleterious competition. We don't have those tools right now, at least in this case, that's my opinion, and I'll be, for that reason, I, my job is to support this motion. Other comments, or may I call the question? I'm going to call the question. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. All those opposed? It passes six to one. Mr. Paulson, are there appeal rights in this matter?
There are appeal rights. Anyone who's not satisfied with the decision of the planning commission can appeal that decision. The forms are available in the clerk's office. There is a fee for filing the appeal, and the appeal must be filed within 10 days.
Any of the commissioners wish to take a short break, or shall we go to the next case? We're good? Item three on our agenda, and thank you all for coming down. Item three on our agenda is 15299 Los Gatos Boulevard, Architecture and Site Application This is Conditional Use Permit Application U-18006, requesting approval for expansion of a retail area in an existing automobile service station, Rotten Robbie, and exterior modifications on Property Zone CH. This is APN 42419047. The property owner and applicant is David Mordick of Robinson Oil Company, and the project planner is Azar Khan. May I have a show of hands from the commissioners who have visited the subject property? Do we have any disclosures on this item? Commissioner Birch?
This may not be a disclosure, it's just a quick question. I assume I'm right on the cusp, because I didn't get notice that this is within, okay, okay, just wanted to make sure.
Your assumption is correct. Mr. Khan, may we have a report, please?
Sure. The applicant is requesting approval of a conditional, I'm sorry, the applicant is requesting approval of expansion of retail area in an existing automobile service station and exterior modifications at 15299 Los Gatos Boulevard. Staff recommends approval of the proposed use and the exterior modifications per the conditions of approval.
That was brief, but important. Questions for staff? Seeing none. I'm going to call the applicant. Erin? Graziosi?
Yeah.
Ah, oh, many, many. Name and address, please.
My name is Erin Graziosi, and I'm representing the Rotten Robbie at 15299 Los Gatos Boulevard. I am part of the fourth generation at Robinson Oil, and I oversee retail operations, supply and transport, sorry, I hate talking in public, and commercial feeling for our company. I'm here today to request your support for the application of the Rotten Robbie project before you. Over the last few years, we have been actively upgrading existing sites throughout our Rotten Robbie locations. The project we are proposing on Los Gatos Boulevard will allow us to upgrade and update our current building, which is an old auto service and lube, and would be remodeling it into a small store. This will allow us to provide increased value to our customers through additional food and beverage options than what we currently provide in the space that we have. So I'm here today to ask for your approval, and if you have any questions, I will do my best to answer them, so thank you.
Do we have questions for the speaker? Commissioner Birch?
It was a little unclear in this packet. I know we've got a drawing, but we also received this photograph.
So that's on our location in Campbell, and that we remodeled a couple of years ago, and so that's kind of what we're presenting as, kind of what we've been doing as we've been updating sites.
So to be clear, this is the finished project, or product, because it says it's open while under construction, so I wasn't sure if there was some indication that there was more that was going to happen with this, or...
No, that is the finished product, at the site that we did.
And then can I ask one other question, Chair?
Yes.
So my understanding of this really is, right now, you've got all those beverage coolers just kind of sitting in those bays?
Mm-hmm.
And I totally agree, this site is so not ADA.
It's a challenging site.
That the intent, then, is to clean that appearance up, it doesn't feel like you're walking into a garage bay, and to revise the slopes, the steps, and everything to meet current code regulations?
Yes.
I assume you would have to do this anyways if you were doing any level of remodel, right? I mean...
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Familiar with the area there?
Yeah, I grew up here, so yeah.
Do you think this building looks anything like the area?
No.
I don't either. So is there some particular reason why you've chosen to ignore the character of the area?
Oh, you're talking about the new building? I was also joking about our old building.
No, I know your old building, but this new building, if it's going to look like the one in Campbell, you think that's in character with the rest of the street?
Well, that side of the street, I would argue, doesn't have the same type of consistent character that other places in Los Gatos has.
Does have some old properties.
It has some old properties, there's very different ones, there's some empty properties. So really, our goal is to take a not-so-great building now, to update it, to make it better, to make it much more usable for the customers. We're confined in a very small space, it's a bit of an awkward space for what we want to do, and it's small, and so we're trying to stay within the existing footprint that we have and upgrade it to the best of the ability in that site.
I'm just curious, is there some reason why you couldn't do all of that and make it look better?
We personally like this design. I mean, it's all beauties in the eye of the beholder, I guess, and as we've gone up in front of different city council meetings, it's been very interesting to see what different cities tend to like, so...
So this is a typical building you've been putting in the other cities?
Yes. There's one on Fox River, in Willow Glen, yeah, I'm familiar.
Other questions? Commissioner, they've been there since 1960.
Oh, I know, I've been there.
Maybe the area...
I thought you were asking recommendations.
Maybe the area changed around them. I see no other questions, so thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any members of the public who wish to address this issue? And, madam, you will have five additional minutes to provide rebuttal to anything you just heard.
No rebuttal, thank you.
All right, thank you. Then I'll close the...
No, wait, don't we get to have, if there was no one speaking, she's coming back, we still get to ask questions?
I did not see that, sorry. Commissioner Birch?
Calm down.
Sorry, I'm, I think the one commissioner that lives over there. I'm going to jump on what Commissioner O'Donnell was saying. I agree, the buildings over there have not been cared for in the manner that other areas of Los Gatos have been. However, I don't think that means we shouldn't. I certainly hope that as business continues to boom over there, and you're packed all the time, the shopping center right next to you is also packed all the time, they've got great services in there, that we'll start seeing stores upgrade. So a lot of times when we have formula retails, we had a pretty lengthy discussion... While we appreciate that there may be a standard that the company adheres to for their exterior, we often look to you to say, you know, this is Los Gatos, and we consider it special, and I don't, I personally don't consider any part of town that should be an area that's like, eh, it's over there, let's not worry about it. I think, rather than that, it would be great to see someone like you that has been anchored in the community that long start a trend of an upgrade that is more befitting to the town. So is there a possibility within the company to go back to the, with this and say, hey, you know, they actually want us to make this a little nicer? Or is this the, this is what we build, that's it, there's no discussion?
We have built, you know, different things depending on kind of where we've been. And to be honest, in some of those locations, I think this ends up being a better design than what comes out. I think it's simple, I think it's clean, and I think as that area starts to change, I would imagine that it would look even better as some other stuff gets upgraded around it.
Okay. Thank you. Would you like to say that?
Hello, I'm Dave Mordick, I'm the Robinson Oil's construction manager. This building, as noted earlier, was built in 1960. It's kind of a metal post-type building that's infilled with sheet metal. You don't have the ability to hang a lot of stuff off those walls with any weight. The material we're proposing is a lightweight aluminum material that can hang on these walls without causing any structural issues.
I see no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll turn this commission for questions of staff, comment, or a, or if they're ready to make a motion. I have a question for staff, if I may. Mr. Paulson, your favorite word is purview. Is it within our purview to take a tougher look at the ANS aspect of this application? And would we have the authority to ask for a redesign under the ANS aspect of it?
You would. You always have that opportunity. And I think what you have here is someone trying to utilize an existing shell and just modify the interior. Doesn't sound like they had much interest in starting from ground up, which is what a lot of folks have been commenting on, to completely change the style of the building potentially, whether or not they're amenable to going back and doing that. Staff doesn't have the answer to that.
Yeah, I'm not looking...
But that is definitely in your purview to request.
I'm not looking for a new building, but I'm looking for definition of the word, make it look a lot better. All right, staff, commission, Commissioner O'Donnell?
I think it's a uniquely ugly building. And it would remain a uniquely ugly building, and I'm not in favor of doing that. If they want to keep their ugly building, then that's fine, because we can't do anything about that. But if they want to change that building, then we can do something about that. And I would like to do something about that. Now, I can understand the engineering question, if we want to do it really simply, and we want to hang things on the existing structure, but you know, that's not our problem. If it isn't worth doing it well, as far as I'm concerned, don't do it. And so I, in case there's any doubt, I'm not in favor of this.
I do not disagree with you, but we would lose the ACP aspect of the revision.
What's...
Handicap. ADA.
Well, again, that's not really our problem. They have to be in compliance with applicable law, and if the law says it's not applicable, God bless them.
Commissioner Hootis?
I suspect I have similar concerns, but I can't really tell, because I find the drawings and renderings to be incomplete for me to make a judgment. So I would be interested in having the applicant potentially do some more work in the way they would render the exterior. I have a hard time grasping exactly what it is they're trying to do with the building.
Yes, sir.
I certainly don't disagree with that, but I'd hate to have them have more complete plans to show me what they did in Campbell. I mean, that just is wasting their time. If you are saying with more complete plans, and it still looked the same, you might approve it, then it's worth their doing it, I would think. But I don't care how complete their plans are. If it's going to look like this building in Campbell, I will never approve it, insofar as my vote means anything.
So let me ask the commissioner a question. If we don't follow staff's recommendation, and we can't make the findings, we have alternatives. And one of them is, continue the application with direction to a specific hearing date. What kind of direction would we give, Commissioner O'Donnell?
The direction I would give is that it is not enough to simply hang some metal on the existing structure to make it, to do this, because it's clear, the answer there is, we don't want to do any extensive work to make it better-looking. We simply want to do something which will make us more money. And so I would say, yes, we could send it back, but the indication we've gotten in our answer is, they're not inclined to want to do that, although I suppose rather than turning it down, we could give them another opportunity.
Why don't you take a shot at that?
Well, that's, perhaps we should have reminded somebody else, but let me just say this. If I were, I would simply move that we continue this matter to a date certain, to give the applicant a time to respond to our comments. But there has to be more than my comment, so if we add some more comments...
I'll second the motion, and then we can discuss it.
Okay. I will move, we move, we continue this to a date certain, and I'll ask staff for suggestion on the date, and that, I would adopt that in this motion. So may I have a second?
I'll second that motion. Commissioner Hootis?
I would add a comment, which would be that I believe this building should be, and the renderings that reflect it should be, should reflect recent high-quality buildings in those areas of Los Gatos Boulevard, particularly buildings that have been erected in the last 10 years. So that would, I would add that comment.
So we're saying they don't have to do anything, but if they're going to do something, it's going to be better than what they're providing. Commissioner, Commissioner Birch?
And to be maybe a little bit more specific in that, part of this, I think, that glares out is these gleaming white panels. I understand the structural issue, however, I also know that steel can be beefed up, and there are things you can do, it's just an expense. But I think within this realm is a review of Los Gatos Boulevard and the colors that are typically on there, which seem to be of more of a tan, brown, green. We kind of seem to have a very nature-driven color palette that's going through that area that would probably soften this appearance, but right now, it just looks like a white box. And I think that there will also need to be some sensitivity to placement of items outside. I also think this picture probably wasn't the greatest selection, just because of the amount of stuff sitting around it. So, you know, I would look to them to say, you know, if there's a reasoning behind, we're not able to beef these walls up or whatever more, I need to see structural justification for that, right? Like, if it's going to involve significant level of work that would be hardship, I need to see that. Otherwise, I'd like to see it designed, as was said, with more sensitivity to the more recent buildings, and potentially even just color tone options on the metal panels that have been provided, that perhaps may be more sensitive to the street.
Commissioner Badami?
I would just like to add the comment that direction can be found in the commercial design guidelines, and that's one of the findings that we have to make anyway. So I would want them to pay attention to that.
Good point. Commissioner Janoff, you had your hand up.
Excuse me, just to be clear, are we asking them to come back with renderings that are not Campbell, but are this property-specific? Great, thank you.
Consistent with our commercial design guidelines, as was pointed out. Other questions? I'm going to have a question for staff. Do you have enough from what we have said to work on?
We do.
It's not too vague or general. All right, good, I didn't want to waste your time. Then I'll call the question. All those in favor, raise your hand, aye? Motion pass, we need a date, sorry. Motion doesn't pass yet. I need a date, specific date, please.
Let's do August 22nd, and then that will be short enough, or if the applicant decides they're not interested in making those choices, or changes, then they can let us know that, and then we'll continue it from there.
And if that's not enough time, they could ask for a continuance.
Correct.
All right, now we have a date, 8/22. All those in favor, aye? Motion passes unanimously. Are there appeal rights, Mr. Paulson?
There are not.
Why is that?
Because an action hasn't been taken.
Thank you very much. Now we will take a 10-minute break. Thank you very much. Now, we will take a ten-minute break.
You can bring your own bottle.
We're resuming the Los Gatos Planning Commission meeting of Wednesday, July twenty-five, and we will go to item four on our agenda, which is fifteen nine twenty-one, Rochon Terrace, Architecture and Site Application S eighteen double oh two, requesting approval for demolition of an existing single-family residence and construction of a new single-family residence on property zoned R one eight. This is APN five two three twenty-five double oh nine. The property owners are Patrick Hanser and Monica Zaocha, and the applicant is Davide Giannella of Arcadia Architecture, and the project planner is Sean Mullen. May I have the hands of the commissioners who have visited the subject property? Are there any disclosures by commissioners for this item? I have one. I visited the location and spoke with Mrs. Steiki Bosart, whose house was under extensive renovation. We did not discuss the pros and cons of the property, but she did point it out to me. Mr. Mullen, would you give us a staff report?
Thank you, Chair Kane. Before you tonight is a request to demolish an existing single-family residence and construct a new single-family residence at one five nine two one Rochon Terrace. The subject property is located on the southwest corner of Rochon Terrace and Rochon Court and is developed with an existing one-story, single-family residence. The parcels immediately adjacent to the subject property are within the town's boundaries. However, some county properties are located in the surrounding neighborhood subdivisions along Linda Avenue and Rochon Terrace. The project is being forwarded to the planning commission to determine whether the proposed contemporary modern architectural is compatible with the surrounding neighborhood subdivisions as it relates to the residential design guidelines as detailed and discussed in the staff report. Additionally, the staff report provides a summary of the reviews and recommendations of the town's consulting architect and the applicant's response to these recommendations. A desk item has been distributed to the commission, which includes a letter from the applicant to their neighbors and signatures gathered during the applicant's neighborhood outreach efforts and additional public comments received after the publishing of the staff report. Based on the analysis detailed in the staff report, staff recommends approval of the architecture and site application subject to the recommended conditions of approval included in Exhibit Three, and this concludes staff's presentation. We are available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mullen. Are there questions? Commissioner Birch?
Thank you. On page four of nine of the staff report that we received, there is a table outlining adjacent properties. Are any of these properties listed as, you know, the neighborhood, the more immediate neighborhood? Are any of those county properties?
The property at fifteen nine zero two, which is listed with a zoning designation of R one eight pre-zone?
Right.
Would be county.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions of staff? Commissioner Hudes?
Related to one five nine zero two, which is county, are we aware of any requirements on the part of the county for neighborhood compatibility? And was there any, since Los Gatos is part of the county as well, were there any, was there any input into that contemporary design of one five nine zero two?
I'm not aware of any requirements for compatibility analysis and regarding the the architecture that's being applied to that residence, the town would not have any input if, unless the work was extensive enough to trigger petition for annexation into the town.
Just as a follow-up, would residents have been informed of that construction and that design, that they could participate in a county process?
I'm not aware of a process for the county for that.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Seeing none, I'll open the public portion of the public hearing and give the applicant an opportunity to address the commission for up to ten minutes. Mr., well, who's ever speaking for the applicant, give me your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Patrick Hanser. The address is, is this on? Sorry. The address is one five nine two one Rochon Terrace. And before I begin, I just wanted to state that I'm going to start out the presentation and then hand it over to Davida, the architect, and then I'll conclude.
I apologize. Today is my anniversary of all things, and I have a wife over at Nick's waiting for me. I know it's not standard in schedule, but I wanted to speak on behalf, you know, I'm just a neighbor. Any chance I could just sign something or do a quick two-minute speech? I know it's not standard or anything, but with the expectation--
If I, if I could add, he wrote us a letter of support, but it came--
No, you can't add, no.
It's just not, I know it's not--
You're gonna get a, you're gonna get a thirty-second matrimonial exception. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. My name is Jeff Takuchi. I live two houses down from the proposed remodel at one five nine four one Rochon Terrace. I've lived in Los Gatos for twenty-six years in this residence, and to my knowledge, the house and the proposed house has not been remodeled at all. My wife and myself do have looked at the plans with Mr. Hanser when he came around the neighborhood showing to us, and we do support the look, design, feel of it. I know it's not traditional fitting the neighborhood, but we do like it. I think it would update and complement some of the houses around.
Happy anniversary.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. I think you got, I can kind of go on, but you got the idea. We do fully support the--
Okay.
--look and design of the house.
And that time will not be taken from yours, sir.
Good. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Patrick Hanser. I'm a software engineer at a healthcare company. My wife Monica is a doctor at the Veterans Administration. She would love to be here tonight, but she has to work, unfortunately. We have two wonderful kids, as you can see, ages two and five. It's always been our dream to build our own home, and after a long search, we have finally found the perfect neighborhood in which to raise our children. As, here is a picture of the extended neighborhood. As you can see, there is only one entry, which is north onto Linda Avenue from Blossom Hill Road. Every time that someone walks or drives into the neighborhood, they first see the houses on Linda Avenue. A couple of the houses on Constancia's Court are also very prominent. There's a great deal of architectural diversity in these houses, and it is this experience that forms one's impression of the neighborhood. The styles of the extended neighborhood include Spanish, Mediterranean, Tudor, bungalow, cottage, craftsman, ranch, mid-century modern, and contemporary. If we lived in an open area, people in the immediate neighborhood may take several different ways in and out, so they would have a different visual experience. The only shared visual experience would be that of the immediate neighborhood itself. However, in a closed area like this, everyone must travel along Linda Avenue every single time, and so they have the same shared experience, and that's of the extended neighborhood as a whole. We also did a tremendous amount of community outreach. Early in the design process, we distributed this written invitation to an open house where we introduced our design plans and began a dialogue with our neighbors and included our contact information. We had very good attendance with eight people stopping by to talk. Several times during the design process, we went door-to-door around the neighborhood to discuss the house and to show the updated plans. From these conversations, we learned that the most important issue was the views, so we reduced the overall building height. We received very positive feedback, and many people signed our letter of support for the design. Our most extensive conversations was with the owners of one five nine three one Rochon Terrace, our next-door neighbors, and they are here tonight as well. They had some privacy concerns, as well as questions about how their view would change. We exchanged many emails back and forth, and we also talked in person. We worked together to find a resolution, and they are now in support of the project and have written us a letter of support to the commission. For the home design, we opted for a combination of functionality and appearance in design with a strong emphasis on being green. Very early in the design process, we worked with an arborist to determine a safe distance from a very, very tall redwood tree in the backyard, and this really informed our design to, for, to maintain the safety of both the large protected tree, as well as the foundation of the, of the home. We also chose materials such as natural transparent stained wood in order to soften the appearance of the home, tie it in with its surroundings, and reflect the common architectural elements of the neighborhood. The low profile of the house preserves the view, the beautiful views of the scenery and minimizes shadows that might be on any neighbors. This is of particular importance to our next-door neighbors, as well as some others. A vast majority of the area of the roof will be covered with solar panels, and we chose a roof material such that they can integrate seamlessly and look very nice. The shed roof slopes away from the street in order to minimize visual impact and also to face the southwest for better efficiency. We took water conservation and energy efficiency very, very seriously in our choices of heating and cooling and, and the plants and so forth. Now, I'm going to pass it over to Davida.
Hi, I am Davide Giannella, Arcadia Architecture. So, in approaching the design of this house, obviously being aware of the zoning guidelines, and I think should be the desire of any architect, to design something that fits and marries the character of a certain area, the approach that we took was not to flatly mimicking a certain feature of the existing surroundings. We thought that a more sensible approach was to really interpret the proportions, the size, the masses of the existing building around that, rather than copying features that were maybe designed and built fifty years ago. And so, to make a building that is responding to the surrounding and yet also alive, meaning coming from nowadays with today's technology and lifestyle, we really analyzed both the geometrical patterns of the surrounding homes. For example, you can see many of the two-story homes around there have a two-story volume, condo boxy over the garage, and a single story attached to it. We kind of inverted this approach by having the garage being the single story, which allowed us also to double its use as a terrace, and the two-story portion being pushed back on the side. The way to create a mass that is more homogeneous, as opposed to the L shape that many of those other homes might have. And part of the initial approach was, even though we have an allowable maximum height of thirty feet, was to really be as low as possible, considering there is a two-story home and yet on a corner lot. And so, what we did, we really have sloped roofs. We really don't have any flat roof, except for a terrace, but with a shallow slope and sloping backward. That saved about five feet of maximum height. We are at twenty-five. This is what we are proposing, and this is what it will look like if we were to have a traditional four-and-twelve gable roof or hip roof. We will be almost at thirty feet. Also, this is the side view of that. Again, we are stepping down, trying to use a low profile, not to compete with adjacent homes and also with the big tree behind us. Again, you can see the difference if we were to maximize the house size and height. Square footage-wise, also, we are not at the limit. We are a little bit less than that. So, really, the elements that we use were layering. We are stepping the house in both vertical and horizontal planes, so that we don't have two-story continuous walls. We have a strong first-floor roof that breaks the house in two parts, so that it aligns with the adjacent homes. There are single stories. The top of plate really align pretty much with the other homes. Windows proportions are very similar to those, kind of squarish, not exactly square, but not even elongated. No corner windows, no excessive glazed surfaces. Warm materials, a variety of materials like the other homes have, so stucco, wood siding, some small accent tones, everything earthy tones, so that really it will blend with the surrounding. We even make sure the fencing around the house has the same material as the finishes, so to integrate it with the side and to break the mass. We also respected the privacy. We have very few windows facing on the front, except for the large ones that you see, which are just a stairwell, so there are no rooms behind those large windows. But at the end, I really would like to emphasize that the actual approach should be one where the spirit of the side is respected, the atmosphere. So, if this neighborhood is seen as cozy, charming, warm, I think those are the characteristics that any passerby will see of this house, being playful, warm, and not imposing, not monumental. As you can see, the entry is kind of recessed and of a regular size. We're not trying to give too much importance to the double volume, double-height volume by breaking it with a clear story, which works to bring in cold air inside in summer. So, it's operable, so it really works as a green feature, and stepping back the other volumes behind it, so you don't have a big flat surface facing any direction. Just a quick note, a few months ago, for Career Day, I was at the San Mary Middle School in Los Gatos, and among other projects, I showed this one, this rendering or a previous version, and the kids reacted very happily about it, and one kid said, "It looks like a playful project, a playful house." And I think that's the character. It's nothing cold, overly modern, or stark. It has some warmth and coziness, even though it has shapes that are a little more contemporary. Thank you.
Thank you, Davida. Although the, we received a lot of positive feedback, we did get a couple of complaints about the, the roof in particular. And so, I, in the interest of time, I will address many of those during the question and answer session, but there is one that I would like to talk about right now. The married couple at one five nine one one Rochon Court have written letters of opposition stating that the contemporary design of one five nine oh two Rochon Terrace in the immediate neighborhood should not factor into the neighborhood context at all because it is on county land. They have also said that none of the houses in the neighborhood on Los Gatos land have flat roofs. And I'm going to skip ahead to here. The contemporary house at one five nine oh two Rochon Terrace, as has been stated, did not have to go through the town process, but let's just imagine for a moment that it did. Its immediate neighborhood is different than ours. Its, the styles in its immediate neighborhood include styles such as Mediterranean, Tudor, Craftsman, Ranch, and Mid-Century Modern. The Mid-Century Modern has, also has flat roofs. These different styles are all right next to each other, all in a row. Their contemporary style fits in with their, with the eclectic nature of their immediate neighborhood and is not an aberration. The residential design guideline defines an aberration as a house that was constructed with little consideration to its neighborhood architectural style. I think that their design clearly fits in with their immediate neighborhood and is therefore not an aberration. Section three-point-two-point-one also states that roof pitches in the nearby neighborhood should be considered. I'm not, I couldn't find what the definition of nearby was, but I just wanted to mention that the Mid-Century Modern house is only three hundred feet away from our property, and so I don't know if that fits in with the nearby definition or not, but that they also have flat roofs. And again, as Davida mentioned, our roofs are not actually flat. The first-floor roofs are five to twelve, and the second-story roofs are two to twelve and one to twelve. Here, you can see the picture of the Mid-Century Modern house with flat roofs and also the contemporary house that's under construction. And I'll skip ahead here and go to the conclusion. In conclusion, we feel that the extended neighborhood should be given more weight than it normally would be. The extended neighborhood is eclectic with many different styles, including Mid-Century Modern and contemporary houses with flat roofs. The contemporary style in the immediate neighborhood is not an aberration. We took great care--
Sir, you need to wrap it up.
Oh, I'm sorry. We took great care to make sure that, that we featured the common architectural elements and that the trend in Los Gatos and our own neighborhood has been towards more and more architectural diversity.
Thank you very much. We have questions for the speaker. Commissioner Badami.
I'm going to be looking for a very focused response to my question. Can you elaborate on how your design is compatible with the immediate neighborhood? And when you look at immediate neighborhood, it's actually defined in our residential design guidelines. And being that you have a corner lot, there's eleven other homes that are part of your immediate neighborhood, so if you could focus on how your home is compatible with the immediate and not the extended neighborhood?
Sure. Well, first off, we have a, we have a precedent-- Well, first off, we have a precedent that, and I've made the case, that the home on 15902, although it's on county land, is in our immediate neighborhood. And I also tried to make the case that they didn't just ignore and do whatever they want. If they had been on town land, then they would have fit in with their immediate neighborhood as it kind of daisy chains along. So we're following along on their precedent, which is a modern, contemporary house as well.
So I hear you to say the one house, but the 10 others?
No. Also, maybe Davida would like to answer this as well. I think he did a very good job, and it's a very good question, that it's not just a matter of mimicking a particular style, but of looking at the different architectural elements that are shared there and, you know, just because we don't have the same roof of them does not mean that we are not... We took very, a lot of care in looking at the shared common architectural elements and trying to play to those as well. Did you want to answer that some more?
Yes, for us, it was a matter of aligning, I don't know if we have the diagram here. Some of the top of plates here, considering we are on the lowest spot, we still managed to, we didn't, took advantage of that to have a taller house, we still kept as low a profile as possible. We set back the building as much as possible while respecting the tree, and we broke the mass in many layers so they wouldn't be massive in any way, and we kept all the main features like doors and windows to standard heights and proportions. We employed earthy tones and windows, materials that are compatible as far as color and finishes like wood siding and trims that really work with the neighborhood. And perhaps the only differentiating feature is the shape of the roof, which is a sloping roof. Just we decided it was much more efficient with photovoltaics and with not increasing the height of the building to just shed it toward the back, where we actually are also collecting rainwater for the landscaping. So it's actually a very technologically functioning house.
Okay, sir, you answered my question. I'm looking for compatibility. Thank you very much.
Other questions? And we need to keep in mind, we need to hear speakers from the audience, so let's have questions for the applicant right now. Commissioner Hanson.
I had a question about, the consulting architect for the town looked at this twice, and after the first time, it appeared that you made a number of the changes that he recommended and that was documented in your letter. The second letter that he sent on May 15, 2018, that was in our packet, he had a list of recommendations on page six, and I looked, you sent a response, you know, about a month later and addressed some but not all of those. And normally, we, you know, we would hear why you wouldn't address all of them. Like, for example, you had talked about the, why you wanted to keep all of the wood siding even though he said take it off the top upper parts and just leave it at the bottom, and you talked a lot about why he used standing seam metal roofing instead of the other roofing materials. But the other recommendations that he had in terms of aligning the slopes of the different roof pieces and stuff, you just gave a whole discussion about shed roofing. So my question is, what is your response on those other items?
Sure.
Because normally, you know, you would say, "We could do this," or "We couldn't do it," and why? And I didn't see that in there on items one through four unless I didn't read it right.
Well, I apologize if I didn't answer that in a sufficient way. The first time that we submitted, the TCA said that our house was compatible, was very well-designed for its particular style, and he also, he gave a couple of recommendations, and one of the, he said, "Of all the recommendations I had," that the shed roofs were one of the things that he could see leaving them as is, and so he was basically approving of that. And then the second time came through, and he kind of had different thoughts on the matter, so I was, it was a bit confusing. Yes?
Okay, so that didn't really answer my question. So I read all your description about the shed roof in there, but he had very specific direction to reverse the main shed roof, slope to lower the second floor even on the front, and simplify the roof forms and slope directions, and he had drawings of how you could do that. And it wasn't going to be to eliminate the shed roof, it was just to make some changes to make it more compatible with the neighborhood. So that's the answer I was looking for, but...
I'd be happy to answer, that's a good question. So in terms of change, of reversing the shape of the shed roofs, our shed roofs are facing southwest, and we're very much into having solar panels. And by reversing them, we would then face northeast, and we basically couldn't have solar panels. They would be extremely inefficient and wouldn't really work. That was the main reason why we decided not to do that. And I think that's one of the main reasons not to do that.
Okay.
Commissioner Hudes.
I'll hold off till we hear from the public.
Commissioner Badami, thank you.
Per Exhibit 14, we received correspondence that your preliminary plans that were signed off by the neighbors did not include the roof, and the roof happens to be one of the most controversial issues. So can you elaborate on the omission or the perceived omission, and did you attempt to follow up with the neighbors?
Absolutely, and that's a very good question. That's something that I was going to get to in the question and answer session. So in the very beginning, we wanted to be as proactive as possible and talk to the neighbors as soon as we had even just a rough design. What we had, what Davida provided to us was the cross section, the front cross section of what you see here. And from this, I can, in retrospect, I can now understand why somebody might think that that's flat even though it went back. My wife did a very good job of saying, of trying to point out to people that this is actually sloped back and tried to explain it to her. And as we went around the neighborhood many, several times in the later months, we then had updated plans and showed them to anybody who was interested and wanted to see them, and then we explained them more and more. So we had very good community outreach. I think some of the confusion might have come from the very first, which was just a front cross section.
Thank you.
Other questions for the speaker? Seeing none, thank you. I now invite comments from members of the public. If you've not already done so, please turn in a speaker card. And when you are called to speak, remember to state your name and address for the record and adjust the microphone. You will each have three minutes. Joan, help me. Say again?
Kemtrup.
Kemtrup, thank you.
My name is Joan Kemtrup, and I live at 15950 Roach and Terrace. And this is at the end of the cul-de-sac. And I support this application to build a new home on Roach and Terrace. I like the architectural design, and I think it makes the neighborhood more interesting. I've lived in my house, it was built in 1963 since then. Homes on Roach and Court were built in the 70s, and there is a variation in the designs. Now, the housing on Roach and Terrace is mixed. Some add another story, a few, including mine, which is on the end of the cul-de-sac and not shown on the plans, are the original. The original house owned by the Roachans for whom the street was named, that's on Roach and Terrace on Linda Avenue, that is in the process of being remodeled and has a flat roof. And as far as the neighborhood, as he mentioned, doesn't matter whether it's in county or Los Gatos, nobody knows that. I didn't even know it was still in the county. So I just want to say, I hope you approve this application, and I'm looking forward to this new addition of the neighborhood, which I think will add a nice touch to the neighborhood.
Thank you very much. Questions for the speaker? Thank you. Vida Parsi?
My name is Vida Parsi. My husband and I have lived in Los Gatos for the past seven years. We're at 15908 Roach and Court. Our property is pretty much across, like one house across from the proposed new construction. And I'm here today to represent myself and three other neighbors who couldn't make it today, and two of them actually signed originally not knowing this was a flat or shed roof or whatever they're calling it. And then later on, when they found out, they have sent letters of recommendation, letters of opposition afterwards. Our main opposition to this construction is the roof. We don't think that it comes and blends with the rest of the neighborhood. Some people may call it modernization, but I love Los Gatos and our neighborhood the way it is. I'm not looking to modernize it in this way. They talked about the roof being this way because the height is not going to be as much so it doesn't obstruct the view of the mountains. It still does. I took a picture today with, you know, with the story poles, and it is blocking the mountain views, the views of the mountain. But that's not what I'm here for. My main objection to the project is the roof. The property at 15902 is in the county line. As neighbors, we had no say in it. It is being expanded in different phases, so nobody even, like I thought they're just doing, they're just fixing their landscaping, and then the next thing I realized was that it was being expanded. And, you know, they did some flat roof addition to the back, and it's now some flat roof addition to the front, but we have no say in it. I am here to plead to you as members of the planning commission to save our neighborhood. We love the neighborhood the way it is. We love the old style of this neighborhood. And one thing that I do want to bring to your attention is by approving this modern flat roof shed roof style, you are opening the door for all the other new constructions in town of Los Gatos that is going to happen in the future, and they're going to all refer to this construction as being the house that was permitted. So, again, I'm here to ask for your help to save our neighborhood. And that's it.
You have 30 seconds, you're not out yet.
So, again, just wanted to bring to your attention the two other people that on the form that they had signed, Lauren Swanson and Lloyd and Nancy Thompson, later on when they realized that this wasn't about the height and a new building and it was the structure, they did want to bring their opposition, they have sent a letter. And the other thing is, this is a corner lot, it's a little bit elevated from the level of the street, it's going to stick out like a sore thumb.
No, thank you. Any questions for the speaker? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I don't think I have any other cards, so the applicant will have five minutes to add, end, or rebut.
Sure, thank you very much. I would just like to, I would like to take this time to rebut some of the questions about the complaints that we have had. As far as the neighbors at, sorry, I'll start with what Vida was saying. Vida came to our open house where Monica showed her the front cross section, and Monica said that she was very nice and they got along very well. Monica also mentioned that the roofs sloped back, even though, as I mentioned before, that was the case. And Vida talked about the story poles and her views, that she mentioned that many times, and at no time did she mention the style or the design at all. Later, I went to their house and spoke with her husband, Sharam, I hope I'm saying that right, for about 20 minutes. He was very nice, and we really enjoyed talking. I showed him the views from the house height compared to the one that you see on the bottom left corner there, that, something that, to show that the views, we wouldn't be obstructing them very much at all. And I had the updated designs in my hand and offered to show them to him, but he said he wasn't even interested in seeing them and gave the impression that the design was not even important. He reiterated once again that he was waiting for the story poles to go up. Based on their responses, people from others, we actually proactively lowered the overall height. And their letter says, was talking about the flat roof architecture representing the quaintness of the neighborhood, and the land shouldn't count. In terms of the responding to their argument about the quaintness, once again, I've tried to make the case that unlike normal situations where the immediate neighborhood is the overwhelming factor, that we should put more emphasis into the extended neighborhood, and in this case, there are many, many different styles, close to 10 different styles, and the resident design guideline is seeking to encourage architectural diversity. And then, at the very last second, probably within the last 24 hours, two more people that she was referring to, Lauren Swanson and Lloyd Thompson, I'll address them now. They came to the, Lauren came to the open house, once again, saw the front cross section, Monica clarified with him about this, and we said that we were trying to preserve the views. Later, we baked cookies and went over to talk to him with our children and showed him the updated design and the street level profiles, and he never once mentioned anything about the designs or being not to his liking. However, now he's saying that he doesn't like the roof line. As far as Lloyd, he did not come to the open house, but I talked with him and his wife for a very long time and taught me about the history of the neighborhood. We showed him the updated design and the street level profile of the houses. He was very much in favor, and he signed our letter at the time, having seen that. One thing that, however, now his letter is saying that the two-story design will stand out a lot more than the one-story house, and we feel that that's contradictory to all the other things that we have heard from many of the people, saying that they want to have, you know, a traditional gabled roof, which would be five, five feet even higher. So that was kind of a contradiction. And then the other thing that I would mention out is that both Lauren and Lloyd's emails to Sean both originated from the same email address, and they both CC'd Sharam as well. Not that there's anything necessarily wrong with that, but it just leads me to believe that there was some coordination that was going on here as well. Other things that I'd like to say is that we understand that not everyone likes this particular style, but as the commissioner said before, we have to adjudicate based on the rules, and we have followed every rules and regulations as well. Even though the neighbors didn't necessarily get a say in the county proposal, I've tried to make the case that it would have a strong chance of passing on its own because its immediate neighborhood has a mid-century modern house with flat roofs and has a greater architectural style than we do. And I don't know how much time I have left here. Do you have anything? I'll yield it this time.
Do we have questions for, one second, yes, sir.
Just one element to emphasize about mass and height. Really, it's almost contradictory considering this house. If you look at the second floor over the garage, it's pushed back so much that you don't, half of the house is almost a one-story house. The other half, the real two-story portion, only the stairwell glass is two-story, everything else slopes down. So we are more than five feet less than what we could. Mass is very little.
Thank you. Questions for either of the speakers? Commissioner Hudes?
So I have some questions in different categories, but I'm going to start with a question about neighborhood compatibility.
Sure.
You quoted Mr. Cannon that the house is well-designed within its chosen architectural style, and then you went on to talk about the improvements. You didn't mention that in that same section, he said, "It would, however, be a strong departure from the character of the surrounding neighborhood." And then in his previous letter, he said, "The proposed design creates a substantial dilemma. It is well-designed and would be a good addition to some neighborhoods. However, in this context, it would seem to not be consistent with the residential design guidelines and the town's strong emphasis through those guidelines on neighborhood compatibility." So I'd like you to address in a little more detail why this is compatible with the neighborhood and with the emphasis primarily on the immediate neighborhood as a divine, design, as in the design guidelines. And in particular, you did cite certain elements about proportion, size, and mass. I listened carefully to your presentation, I understand those, I don't need to hear that again, I understand that, those relate me more to building code. You also described cozy, warm, and charming, and while those are interesting attributes, they are difficult to evaluate in an objective way. So I'd really like to understand from objective standards of architecture how this is compatible with the neighborhood.
Sure. One thing I'd like to add before passing the time to Davida is that, one of the things, we worked very closely with staff on this, and one thing that the TCA did not account for is that the contemporary house, he was making the case that it should not count, but we've talked with staff, and they kind of said that he was incorrect on that, and we can talk to staff about that as well, that it should count, and it does set the precedent even if it's on county line. set the precedent, even if it's on county line. Another thing that we did is, we have a conventional roof in between the first and second stories as well, which is a 512. And as you're, as you're, from, from street level, as you're walking along, you don't even see the top-story house. What you would experience as you're walking around is this conventional-type roof on this, coming around the bend and stuff like that.
Yes, like Patrick was saying, the first-floor roof is actually a traditional hip roof. It turns the corner and it stays like all the other homes, sloping in that direction. The only shed roof is at the very top, which you will not even see from street point. You will see the gutter lines at the edge of it. Responding to your question, how we correspond to the neighbors in a more practical way, we have a two-story house just behind us. And that's where we put the two-story volume of our house, even though we are much lower than that one. To our left, we have a single-story home. And that's where we have the majority of it being a single-story with a garage and the lower addition on top of it. So we responded really balancing, as you could see from the street profiles, to the height and the mass of the adjacent buildings. The only missing element perhaps is a traditional hip roof, which everybody seems to be seeking. Adding that will have really make this a big two-story box so visible in the corner. And there are other homes like that across the street. We have a two-story one with a very high pitched roof, just over the garage that looks like an addition of our garage. So we tried to break the mass both horizontally and vertically so it wouldn't be imposing.
So I'm not sure you've really answered my question. I think you've somewhat defended the basis for the design, which I concur with the architect about the quality of the design, but I'm trying to evaluate neighborhood compatibility.
Yes.
And so, if you could, please get to that point quickly.
We reduced considerably the size of the windows, so they are very close to the adjacent homes' windows. The larger ones that you see are the one in the front, the two over the stair. And those are exactly the same size as a lot of those sliding glass doors that the neighbors have, like seven foot tall, eight foot wide, seven by eight, something like that. That's exactly a copy of those sizes. The other windows that you see in the front are very small, like two by two, like other residential homes around us have. Garage door initially was glass. We listened to the TCA and now it's a wood siding. We reduced the parapet of the garage so that we lowered its mass by using cables. We introduced warmer materials with wood siding, which at the beginning, the TCA did not pose to. And those are present in a lot of the adjacent homes. There is a mix of stucco and wood siding. The difference is that this is a more contemporary type of wood siding, but other homes also around there have this mix.
Okay, I've picked up a bit of that. In terms of the windows, specifically, you spoke about the size of the windows, but there are other things. The style of the windows, the number of lights in the windows, the materials used for the windows, the casings around the windows. Are you representing that they are very similar to what's in the neighborhood?
We analyzed the neighborhood and there is really a variety. There are vinyl, all the aluminum windows, vinyl windows, some wood windows. And these are contemporary wood-aluminum clad windows, so they have the beauty of warmth and warmth of wood inside and the durability of aluminum outside. We thought of adding some casing around, but it was more like putting a lipstick to mimic some of the adjacent homes when we didn't feel that was needed. To us, the matter was really a matter of proportion, size, opening to solid ratio.
Okay, thank you. I have other questions about the roof, but I'll let other people go.
Commissioner Badami.
I'll ask one more question about the roof. So you want a metal roof as well. Is there a metal roof anywhere in the immediate neighborhood or even in the extended neighborhood?
I believe that the, that the house at 15902 will also have a metal roof. I'm not 100% sure about that. We made that choice based on the, all of the benefits and the technology that are, that are, go into that. And I could list many, many reasons why it is technologically better. But again, in terms of being seen, with the current design, the top-story roof is hardly visible whatsoever. If you're looking, if you're looking from the street level, you wouldn't even be able to see it. And it's going to be completely covered with solar panels that integrate completely flush. So it's not even really a concern what it's made out of.
Thank you.
Other questions? Commissioner Hudes.
Back on the roof, would you describe, you said that the roof is not a flat roof, correct?
Correct.
Would you describe it as a low-angle shed roof of standing seam metal construction?
Correct.
And so with that characterization, would, in the thirty-nine homes, is the one that's on county property the only one that has that construction?
Well, as I said, also, there's a mid-century modern house that's--
Does it have standing seam metal roof?
No, it was built in 1953. And that's, that's part of the reason here is that, one of the things that the residential design guideline states is that there, change should happen over time. I don't remember the exact section. But as technology gets better and better, we should embrace that while still making it look nice. And we shouldn't stay with old technology just from 1950s and 1960s when there's something that's functionally much better. This is a design that's both functional and beautiful. And so we tried to combine the two of--
Not arguing that. Standing seam metal roofs go back to the 1800s, so, yeah. So with regard to the letter and the comments from Mr. Cannon on the roof, again, you state that the TCA also said that shed roof, the shed roof forms are busy and chaotic. What he actually said was multiple shed roof forms are busy and chaotic. How many different roof planes are there on this house? And how does that relate to the surrounding neighborhood in terms of the number of roof planes?
We really have two different, maybe I should say, three different roofs. The lower one that separates the two stories, first and second floor, the hip roof that wraps around. And that really relates really closely to any other house around the area. The upper roof is one single big plane that slopes all toward the back, the shed roof. It has a sort of jogging profile because it follows the house footprint, but it's all one single plane. And then we have finally one-third roof sloping toward the side of Rochene Court. So those are the three planes. We have two different slopes, shallower one at the top, two and twelve, and five and twelve, the other ones that are at the lower level. So it's really two shapes, two slopes. The TCA, in his first review, didn't mention anything about this roof that we didn't change when we did the second sammito. We adopted all his recommendations from the first review.
Other questions for the speaker? Commissioner Genov.
Two questions. Would you be amenable to simplifying the shed roof planes in accordance with what the TCA is recommending? If he's looking for a single roof plane, front to back, I'm looking at, it kind of counts a little bit differently on the two-story versus the backside of the house, would you be willing to create a simpler, single plane?
Sure, that's a very good question. The point that I would like to make is, we would be not amenable to putting in a conventional, traditional roof because you want the design to be cohesive. For example, if you had a Tudor house and you wanted to put a flat roof on that, it wouldn't be cohesive or make any sense.
And, excuse me, I'm not suggesting that you create a gabled roof or anything else. It's still a shed roof. It still has a low angle. The only question is, would you--
I understand that. I was getting to that. So I'm saying, as long as it's a roof shape that's in the contemporary style, we would be amenable to making small changes, for sure. We're not married to this particular thing.
Thank you. One additional question. You mentioned the solar panels. Are you saying, and this is with regard to, say, an asphalt shingle versus the standing seam?
Correct.
Are you saying that 100% of the low-angle roof are covered or intend to be covered with panels such that you, once the panels are in, you can't tell what the underlying surface is?
I did attach a picture to one of my first proposals. And in those pictures, you literally cannot see anything below that. We have not gotten to the point to know how much area that we need to be covered, needs to be covered. But we want to have a, you know, electric car and we want to have a lot of coverage as well. And so we would take great care into the, if it wasn't 100%, if it was only 80 or 90%, it would be the ones, we would definitely cover anything that would be visible to people on the street.
Thank you.
I add one thing. Regarding the conversation about sloping the shed toward the street, the opposite direction that the TCA had recommended in the second review, considering the photovoltaics, then they would become really apparent and visible from the street as opposed to now, beside the bad orientation sunwise. But by sloping backward, you wouldn't see the photovoltaics which are on the upper roof at all.
Commissioner Hanson, you had your hand up.
Yes, this is, Commissioner Janos' questioning was going where I was trying to ask earlier. Now, I understood your point about the southwest perspective. We have solar panels on our house and the front of our house faces north. And so, you know, you want to put them facing backwards. But I'm looking at this and I can see, you know, that, that there, of the different three roofs you're talking about, at least two of them are going different ways. So it seemed to me, if you're willing to simplify it, I mean, maybe you can't turn the upper one this way because it'll, the sun's over here. But maybe you could take the lower one and turn it this way so that they're going in the same direction. I think if you're willing to make a few adjustments like that, it would go a long way towards addressing the consulting architects concerns.
That's a great recommendation and we would be amenable to that. One of the reasons why we weren't concerned about that is we have a very, we have a lot of area on that main roof and we thought that would be enough for our solar panels. But that's a very good suggestion. We would be absolutely amenable to that.
Okay.
Other questions or comments? I have one. We've been focusing on the house in the neighborhood with flat roofs. And I was wondering if you are aware of, in the residential design guidelines, some houses were constructed with little consideration to the neighborhood style characteristics. Others were remodeled with little sensitivity to existing architectural styles. These aberrations will not be considered when analyzing a neighborhood. I'm wondering, slightly rhetorical question, but how familiar are you with these residential design guidelines? Because they, I feel like we're planets apart.
I have literally read the residential design guidelines, all eighty-six pages of it, about three or four times. And I did call that out in my presentation. What I was trying to say is that the contemporary house did not have to go through this design process, but let's pretend for a moment that it did. And I still feel that it would, it would have a good chance of passing if it had to go through its own residential. So it's not an aberration because within its own immediate neighborhood, it has a house with flat roofs, which is the mid-century modern house. So I think it would, it itself would pass and therefore sets the precedent--
I do not want to argue with you. But not only did I read it, I wrote it. Along with Commissioner O'Donnell, Mayor, we took a tour of the neighborhoods, the town council and the planning commission. And what Larry Cannon was saying is, is the word you've used before on confrontation. He says the immediate neighborhood is important because these neighbors will be confronted, not observed, but confronted by an aberration. And they have to live with it. And so that's why the 225 was used for the house on the street and the corner lot was designed according to the diagram we both referred to. And that's, that's why they're important. Because the confrontation of the people who live around the aberration. And I'm wondering if you are familiar with that or how could I mitigate my concerns with that?
That's a very good point and thank you for bringing it up. We're trying to make the argument that we do not believe that it is an aberration. And also, we're also trying to make the case that the, because of the nature of the enclosed environment, that all of the neighbors are confronted not just with the houses in the immediate neighborhood, but the entire extended neighborhood as a whole. So it's kind of a cohesive, and there's many, many different styles within the whole neighborhood. So we don't feel that it would be right to single one particular one out.
I have one final question. Mr. Giannella, your office is in Los Gatos?
Yes.
But you and I have not had business before. Have you been before the planning commission before?
Yes, for historical renovation, yes.
And did I, did I--
No, that was maybe three years ago. I don't remember meeting, sorry.
But you are familiar with these residential design guidelines?
Yes, when I was hired for this project, Monica and Patrick came to me exactly explaining what the limitation would be. And we discussed and studied the guidelines. And truly, honestly, I came for informal reviews with the planners of the city many times. And Monica and Patrick showed the drawings to the neighbors. And I felt, at least based on my sensibility, maybe wrongly, that you can respond to a certain surrounding with creativity, being able to adopt certain elements without really copying exactly what's there. Otherwise, nothing can ever be different. We can just make photocopies almost.
I appreciate the philosophy. But in going through the guidelines, did you see any one house that faintly resembled the project you're presenting to us tonight?
Yes, the one that has been--
No, sir, in the guidelines?
No, but I believe, to be honest, that when the guidelines were written, there were less of these more transitional, contemporary, more modern homes at that time. And so there wasn't a typical style that was represented at all.
It was written in 2008. Frank Lloyd Wright had been around for a long time.
It is true.
I'm just saying, in these guidelines, can I find a house that looks like yours?
I think the house responds to a family, responds to a site, and responds to certain zoning requirements. And so I believe every design, organically, like Frank Lloyd Wright would do, comes out of the situation as unique because of that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Do we have other questions for either of the speakers? Then I thank you.
Can I add one more thing to that? There is the mid-century modern house that is there as well and that has flat roofs as well.
I don't want to debate. I'm just saying, is there anything like that in these guidelines? No.
There is not one in that guidelines.
Thank you, sir. I turn to the commission for questions of staff, comments, or motion.
Did you close?
I said thank you before and he came back. I'm closing the, you're right, Tom. I'm closing the public portion of the public hearing, turning to my commissioners, looking for comment, questions of staff, or motion. Commissioner Badami.
I'll make a comment. So to the applicant's point, the residential design guidelines, they do encourage architectural diversity. And I'm not opposed to modern architecture. But they also require that visual unity be maintained to protect the character of the neighborhoods. And that's addressed on page 62. The current design, it stands out. And this is a corner lot. And it makes it even more pronounced. So I cannot support the application as presented tonight.
Other comments? Commissioner O'Donnell.
I agree with my fellow commissioner on that point. I also wanted to say that Larry Cannon's letter of May 15th on pages numbered, yes, four and five, particularly on page five, he lists issues and problems which I think in large measure have not been addressed. It appears to me that although these gentlemen are very knowledgeable and I appreciate the work they did and very intelligent, they seem to have a feeling that so much passage of time has occurred that clearly we must do it differently. The problem is, that's not right. The problem is, as long as the rules are as they are, we are supposed to pay attention to those rules. I think this, I agree with Mr. Cannon that this house somewhere else might be fine. But in this neighborhood, I don't find it the least bit compatible with the immediate neighborhood. And as we all know, that's what we're supposed to consider, the immediate neighborhood, not the larger neighborhood.
I would share with you my support for that, Commissioner O'Donnell. And I was thinking, in one context, one sense, the case is wrapped up for me by the staff report saying that the town architect said this was a very good design for some neighborhoods. That's what the staff report said. But the letter from the town architect said, essentially, this is a very fine house and would be fine in some neighborhoods, but not in this one. And I agree. I mean, I think the house is superb. It's marvelous. But our job is to protect, to preserve, and develop consistent with the rules. And I'm having trouble getting this one inside the rules. Commissioner Hudes.
I may have some views different than the chair with regard to-- I may have some views different than the chair with regard to what kind of house is permitted under the Residential Design Guidelines. I don't have a disagreement about the importance of neighborhood compatibility as it's written in the design guidelines. I did have a question for staff, though actually before we get into debate, and that is, how are we to take into account county properties when we're evaluating neighborhood compatibility issues? I noticed that it is -- the county property is on the square footage chart. Is it also to be taken into account for neighborhood compatibility?
Thank you. It is within the immediate neighborhood and would be considered in the decision.
Okay.
Commissioner Hanson.
So I know the design guidelines specify the immediate neighborhood, but I actually drive through that neighborhood a lot because I go over to the Union Safeway, and sometimes the traffic's bad on Blossom Hill. And I actually did that today, and I drove around and around and around and around. And I could not, other than the specific two houses that were mentioned by the applicant, I could not find any house that had this kind of architecture. I mean, they're all older homes, but they all have the, you know, gabled roofs, and they have the same general look and feel, but they're different architectural styles, but they all don't have the completely modern look and feel. That being said, I don't know that it really changes the neighborhood incredibly to do that, but this is also a corner lot. So I'm struggling with this one because it's visible clearly not only from the front but on the side, and it is, as was said, comes up a little bit. And it is very different than anything, not only, you know, in the immediate neighborhood. And I wouldn't count the county house because we don't have jurisdiction. And we've had these situations before where there's a county house that's 4,500 or 5,000 square feet, and our guidelines say you can have a 3,500 square feet. So we can't necessarily use that as a barometer of where the neighborhood could be going. I also wanted to comment that as far as the standing seam metal roof, although I think that the arguments made for the sustainability aspect of it were very strong, and I understand the point about the solar panels. Having done solar panels, I know we put solar panels on our house, and we had to hurry up and get it done for a specific reason, and that is because the fire code regulations were changing, and so that you have to have at least a three-foot perimeter around your solar panels. So you can't actually cover the whole roof because the fire codes require you to have a three-foot barrier or border so that -- for fire safety. So that being said, I'm on the fence about this one, but I -- if it's strictly a matter of neighborhood compatibility, that clearly, not only in 11 houses or so around there, but also in many of the streets around that, you're not going to find houses like this.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
If it's appropriate, I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, sir.
I think we all had an opportunity to talk. I would move that we deny the application for the reasons stated by my fellow commissioners in support of denial, and also in particular because of the issues raised in Larry Cannon's letter of May 15th, particularly on page five, the bullet points. I have not been responded, and visually, having inspected the site and knowing the definition of immediate neighborhood, it is not compatible, just visually, it just is not compatible. And so that's the basis of my motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Commissioner Badami.
Second.
All right, discussion. Commissioner Birch, do you have anything to add to this?
Everyone has so articulately stated. I fully agree with my fellow commissioners. I drove around the neighborhood too. It's a beautiful home. I just feel that it's not compatible with the immediate neighborhood.
Okay. You are not usually so silent, so I was worried.
Yeah, it's been a long day.
Any other comment or discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. I count unanimous hands. The application is denied at this point. Mr. Paulson, are there appeal rights?
There are appeal rights. Anyone who's not satisfied with the decision of the Planning Commission can appeal that decision to the Town Council. Forms are available in the clerk's office. There's a fee for filing the appeal, and the appeal must be filed within 10 days.
We move on then to other matters, and I'm making up item five called Commission Matters. Does anybody have anything they want to address to staff or the commission? No Commission Matters? Then I look to the Director of Community Development for the director's report.
Thank you. Two items. One, just wanted to make sure that folks, all of the folks that are watching, the Town Council will be considering North 40 specific plan amendments again on August 7th. And so anyone interested in that can attend that and/or provide written comments. And the second is a big item. We're currently recruiting for a number of boards and commissions. One specifically is the General Plan Advisory Committee. We're getting ready to get started on our general plan update. So if you know anyone that is interested in either the general plan or volunteering for the town, it's not only the General Plan Committee. I believe there's some spaces on bike and ped and community senior services. So check the town's website for any openings and encourage folks that you know to apply.
Thank you. And if I may, I thank the commission for its service and hard work. This meeting is adjourned.